Good evening. We'd like to welcome you to your monthly Board of Education meeting for April the 26th, 2018. First item of business is to call on Mr. Terry Draper for the pledge of allegiance. And then following that, Ms. Carolyn Walker with the mission statement.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beaufort County Schools will provide quality educational programs and services to ensure student, academic, and vocational success.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Phillips has just informed me that we do not have anybody signed up for public comments, so we're going to proceed on with the agenda. Next item is to approve the agenda. And folks in the audience, I just want to let you know, we're going back to the old way. We've got these nice laptops and all this stuff, but we've had a little glitch, so we're doing the paper route again. So that's what we're doing tonight. So everything's on paper. So going back the old way. All right. We've got your agenda in front of you. If you see any additions or deletions, if not, I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
All right. Got a motion and a second. See, no discussion. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next item is the approval of the minutes. I'll entertain, and you've got those on right there. You'll have to look them over before having a motion.
A move, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We've got a motion and a second, no discussion. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay. Item number four, public recognition. And this month, we're going to ask Ms. ECP to assist Nicole Howard Spencer with these awards at this time. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The character trait that was recognized in our schools for the month of April was good judgment, and our prizes this month are sponsored by Pelican Snowballs of Washington. The nominees at the elementary level were from Bath Elementary, Elena Ahearn; from Chalkwood Middle, Caitlin Boyd; from Chalkwood Primary, Chase Haddock; from Eastern Elementary, Ignacia Frank; from John Cotton Taylor, Lorena Medina Mesa; from John Small, Jocelyn Salazar; and from S.W. Snowden, Kimora Daughtry. And the winner at the elementary level was Elena Ahearn, if she will come forward. Elena is a fifth grader at Bath Elementary School. Her mother is Mrs. Nicole Daniels, if she will stand. And she was presented by Ms. Sarah Ross, the counselor, and the fifth grade teachers at Bath Elementary School. And they wrote, "Elena consistently shows good judgment in her classes. Recently, Elena made a good decision concerning a project in science class. During class time, she worked hard to complete the three sections of the assignment. She went to put everything together on the foldable presentation board, and it would not fit. She had found too much information, pictures and graphs, to display in the foldable. I told her she could rearrange everything, everything, the next day. The next day, she arrived at school with a smile. At home that night, she retyped information and resized pictures and graphs to make the material fit on the foldable. She made a good judgment and came to school prepared. She did not want to be behind on her assignments. During this week's guidance lesson, Elena's class was working on a novel study. A few students came in late. These students have physical and learning challenges and have been working with other teachers. They went straight to their desks. Elena quickly got up and got books for them, then helped the students find the correct page without being asked. She looked out for others and is always looking for ways to help. We are so proud of the way Elena displays good judgment. She is an asset to our school.
Good job, Elena.
At the middle school level, the nominees were, from Chalkwood Middle, Jaden Clark; from P.S. Jones, Amber Camara; and from S.W. Snowden, Anaya Weatherford. And the winner at the middle school level was Amber Camara, if she will come forward. Amber is a sixth grade student at P.S. Jones. Her mother is Miss Alenia Camara, if she will stand. And she was presented by Ms. Dawn Landon, her teacher, if she is here, or I see the guidance counselor is here from P.S. Jones. And it reads, "Finding a middle schooler who displays good judgment at all times can be a difficult task. Middle school is a difficult time where students are heavily influenced by each other and often lose the beat of their own music due to the strength and loudness of everyone else's music, not Amber Camara. Amber continues to dance to her own music even though her first year of middle school is nearing its end. Fortunately, the music she listens to points her in the right direction and keeps her making good, sound decisions. The first time I met Amber, she was taking a final exam in my room for another class. She came in the room quietly, had a library book with her, and proceeded to open it and read while waiting for the test to begin. Her classmates did what most sixth graders do and came in talking and socializing. Once Amber began my class a little while later, I continued to see her make good choices. She asks great questions in class, places herself around students that are good influences, and is quick to give others her opinion if she thinks they are making bad choices. I am so lucky to have Amber in my class, and I hope she continues to dance to her own music for a really long time. At the high school level, the nominees were, from the Early College High School, Alex Jackson Matthews; from the EdTech Center, Tyshaun Jennings; from Northside High School, Grace Armstrong; and from Southside High School, Grant Harold. And the winner at the high school level was Grant Harold from Southside High School. Grant is a 12th grader at Southside High School. His parents are Otis and Paula Harold, if they will stand. And he was presented by the CDC at Southside High School, Vicki Hamel. And she wrote, "Grant stands out as using good judgment in his everyday actions. His good judgment is exemplified by his choices. He volunteers at the elementary school, leads his peers by anchoring the Southside news nest, and most recently showed good judgment in his choice of where to attend college. When I asked him what helped him make his decision about a school to attend, he said, 'The cost.'" And he shared the school he chose was offering him the same opportunities for a degree with a lower cost and more scholarship money. While he was attracted to what the private college had to offer, he saw the value in the North Carolina public college system. This type of good judgment will continue to serve him well as he moves forward in life.
I know your mom and daddy appreciate that, too.
Yeah, when he said money, I saw Otis back there grinning.
Good job.
You don't know how many good things I hear about this young man right here.
Well, they're all true.
I'm gonna tell you that. Absolutely. He spends a lot of time at our other schools. He is a real model-type student.
He's got mom and dad.
Yes. Don't you think that's it?
Exactly.
Now, folks, y'all, welcome to study. We've got a lot of things to talk about, but if you want to leave right now, this is a perfect opportunity to leave.
There's somebody going to a dance.
It doesn't matter, they're gonna leave.
I know a principal that's probably going to a baseball game.
The sad thing is, we can't leave with you.
Yeah.
That's... Won't be far behind.
I hope not.
Yeah, I started sending down a message when he said he had to leave early. I was gonna tell him, "Don't worry, 'cause I've got to go watch a future Hall of Famer play tonight." At least in his mind.
What time?
Seven thirty. I said, "At least in his mind."
In his mind. But that's all right. Hey, Otis, congratulations, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Doing something right with that young man. Doing a lot right.
Yeah. That's a perfect example of some real good parents right there.
All right. We're gonna move on down to item number five on the agenda, and it's the Capitol update.
And one thing that's not on the agenda, and I talked about part of y'all's technology with paper, the internet service is back up. Just if y'all didn't know, the service to our service room, yesterday morning, we came in at seven o'clock, and we didn't have but one leg of our 220 power into the server room, so we didn't have any internet service. So it was underneath. Originally, it was put around the building under rock in the yard, and since that time, the yard's been paved and concreted and all underground. So we put a temporary cord on top of the ground, a 200 amp service across the ground, and then we ran one through our facility upstairs, around the building and conduit, out and back in, and we just switched back over, and they're bringing the service back up.
Good.
So that's not on the report. It wasn't a planned Capitol update.
There you go. Hey, it's working, that's all that matters.
It is working, is it. Just another update, a thing that went on, Northside High School, we had a squirrel that caused a power outage.
It was an expensive squirrel.
Yes, it was.
It was a very expensive squirrel. It caused a lot of damage to the value of the mechanical equipment, $1,621. It also caused high voltage running on my fire alarm system, on the 24-volt system, and damaged over 300 devices. All that has been repaired and put back, but that was a cost of $30,300. Our insurance is denied. Dr. Phillips asked me to reach out to Tide Land, and they are saying that they think theirs, they're still submitting it to their insurance carrier, but they're hoping that they will, but he's saying they probably won't. But they do have some money in a fund that they said they would probably be willing to give us $2,000 to $3,000 toward it out of their...
Slush fund.
I forgot what he calls them in the fund, but he sent us, me and Dr. Phillips, an email about it. But anyway, that's where we at with that project, so.
There's no appeal process with the insurance company?
I don't know. On our cover page, it plainly says, "Anything related to rodents, squirrels, or insects is on our declaration."
Well, I guess it's not every day a squirrel does that.
I told them we should have form of insurance.
There you go. They've seen it.
This might be an obvious question, but how do we know it was a squirrel?
The neighbor next door, right beside it, her dog went out and got the squirrel and ate it.
Oh, he ate the evidence, then we're good.
Well done, then.
Well, you don't know.
Evidence is gone.
They have that device called squirrel protectors on top of the transformers, is supposed to keep the squirrel from being able to touch the hot wire and the squirrel, but he must have been a long squirrel. But he reached and tripped it out, so.
Didn't that happen before with a squirrel somewhere?
It's tripped that school out quite a few times, but we've never had this much damage.
Somebody needs to go squirrel hunting.
Southside High School cafeteria storefront project has been completed, and it was within our budgeted amount.
Does it look good?
Looks very good. They're very tickled. When they came back from Easter, we had it all cleaned up and ready to go, and our freshman students had not really seen that storefront very much, so I'm very impressed with it, and it's cleaned up and looks very, very nice now. Our roof RFPs have been completed, they're sent out. Hopefully, I'll have bids back in where I can present that to y'all next month. Technology server room foundation plans have been submitted to the City of Washington, and upon their approval, we will start on the foundation. And we have ordered the precast structure POs being issued, and they are in the process of making that structure. And that will be on another generator with a dedicated server, so maybe we won't ever have their issue that we had, which we shouldn't ever. The way we fixed it, it's fixed now, so. Washington High School soccer complex, they have completed, Interbanks Engineering has completed the stormwater permits, and I signed those last Thursday, and they have been submitted to Department of Environmental Resources for review. So once those plans are approved, they will be able to move forward the project.
Hey, Stan, just a quick question on that one. I mean, you're following along with that project, right?
Yes, sir.
Because I keep, and I knew you'd said you had, but I mean, I keep reading a lot of different places where they're giving updates. Recently, there was one they put out last week, said they would be taking down trees shortly. I mean, they check and...
Well, that's...
I know that, I know we're not, I know we're not paying into it more, but you're, they're checking with you on these things that they're doing, right?
Yes, sir. And the tree company didn't want to take anything down because they didn't want any fines or any forfeits or anything for them on them, so they're not doing anything to that paperwork. They're all aware that we've got to have that permit in our hand before they can do it.
And I was sure, but you know, they want to do it quick as they can, Mr. Chairman, and they keep saying, and they're moving fast. I just want to make sure that they don't move faster than they let you know what they're doing.
Working directly with the contractor today, I'm hired. Mr. Charlie Woodby Singleton's gonna be doing the clearing, and he communicates with me regularly, so.
And you're really comfortable with all those people, right?
Yes. Everybody they've got are local contractors, everybody they're planning to use.
Well, that's good. I mean, I want them to move as fast as they can, too, but I just didn't want them to get ahead of you.
Yes, sir.
We did have a request that came in from a resident that lives in the neighborhood that's on, that joins that property, and there were seven or eight questions that that individual had, speaking on behalf of others, and we turned those over to the folks at the Athletic Boosters Club to answer, but we, hopefully, we've answered those satisfactorily. But it had a lot to do with buffers and lighting that was going to be used, just being sensitive to the fact that we've got folks that live nearby, we want to make sure that we do that.
And Dr. Phillips and I went and walked and looked, and some of them have kind of encroached and cleaned it out just so they have a better appearance, but we will probably have to put some kind of tree line back in, spruce or something other to just get rid of some indirect lighting and some major noise.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear, because those are the kind of thing I was actually talking about, too. Because I knew there was going to be questions coming up, and I want to make sure that they're getting the answers from maybe you and from some of us.
We've been communicating.
From some of us, not just whoever happens to be there for the school at the present time.
It's been surveyed, they have got that far.
Okay, thanks, Stan.
The survey's been done, and it may encroach into the school, the existing trees, when you come into the school bus drive, a few of those trees are going to have to come down, and most of them probably need to, so the field will get a full sun and get sun some.
So do I.
They're trying to work out the layout of it now. They changed it from the original picture that was shown, which always fields, to a couple of smaller practice fields, because we actually lost some of that area due to that blue line stream that's beside the tennis courts that all had to get shifted back a little bit, so didn't have quite there. Nobody was aware of that was on the state's environmental map as a blue line stream.
And you do not touch that blue line.
That's correct. We can take the timber out, but we can't put anything in it or do anything. We can actually log that piece, but... And of the original plans for Washington High School, it showed the tennis court to be there, so sometime in that process, they wind up having to shift the tennis court down because of it, but nobody ever made a note of the blue line stream.
Yeah.
And that's all of our water coming off our property. Truly, everybody's talking, but the dean or the final say is really not, it's stormwater runoff from our property, but they're calling it a blue line, so we don't, can't argue about it.
And I'd heard they were, up to now and hopefully going forward, they've used almost all local people in every area, right?
Every bit. And everything that, anybody that's talked to me and what Liz Cook has spoken, everybody will be local within Beaufort County, everything's in Beaufort County.
Great.
I think it'll be a great thing.
There will be lighting and some bleachers and other things in the future that we do not have in our, you know...
So that's good. It'll be a good thing.
Can we talk about that? Any other questions about the Capitol update?
Do we need to address something about Eastern Elementary?
Yes, ma'am, I wanted to show y'all a product and ask that. Y'all have already approved the replacement of Pods 7 and 9 at Eastern Elementary. The roofing contractor that we awarded the project to asked me to come to their office and see a new product that they're offering and the new stuff that's out as an alternate. They're still willing to do it as we've already bid and spec. And the product that they do is, just like the roof that's across on the bus garage, that's the black roof, and that roof is made with a liquid membrane and then fabric and then a liquid membrane on top of it, and it's sprayed on. They now offer it where they can put a spray product on the roof at about two-thirds the cost of a regular roof and still give us a 15-year warranty on it. And this product is something else. It'll come right back, you can't poke a hole in it, but it's the same stuff, but it's sort of being applied in the factory. They pressure wash the roof, they prime the roof with a liquid primer, and then they put this in it, puts on it, apply it to it, give us the same warranty and everything. It's no evasion, it's really no noise at the school other than the pressure washer running, and ain't the beating and the slamming, and they'll still give us the same warranty, and they make it black and white, so that would be why it's put on there. But they're offering to do, I reckon y'all got that Curtis attachment? They're offering to do three buildings if we go with the rubber applied on place, or they'll stick with the contract as we spec.
Please refresh my memory, what was the price? Was that the price?
Yes, ma'am, it's on that right there. That's the original.
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight thousand, one hundred, or the two combined.
That was the original to do two, and now they're saying they do three at the same price. And you've got to be determined, do you have an idea what a third one would be?
I would do Pod, no, Pod 6.
Okay, now I'm gonna ask the $10 million question.
That would be the one I would like to do. That's the next one that would be.
What if we used that product but only did the two we agreed to do?
I asked that, and they were not willing to do a discount at this time, but they said it would be set up and doing it, and it wouldn't be a real big cost factor they would give back to us, but I did ask that, because I talked to Dr. Phillips about that. I knew y'all would ask, but...
Sure.
They said if they will still with the real contract, they're not. They actually have it on their roof of the building that they're in. I went up on the roof and they...
I think we have it.
Yeah.
I think I have it at my store.
Okay.
And it is a lot less cumbersome, the installation product, process.
It wouldn't affect our daily operation. They come in, pressure wash it, water runs down the drain, they fix it. The only condition of applying this product is they have to come in and do cores in it, and they check and make sure all insulation's dry. They'll take over 20 cores, depending on, I think it was 800 square foot, they do 20 cores of samples of the insulation below to make sure the insulation's dry and the deck's in good place, in good shape, and they patch those, and then they'll spray this product over top of it. That's your decision. I was very impressed with the product myself.
Now, is Pod number two, the possible third pod, is that next one on the priority?
That's the next one on our list, yes, sir. On the Jimmy Height list and the next one on our list. They'll do any one of that pod that we asked for in Eastern Elementary.
But this is the company that got the original contract.
This is the contract.
Just a different product.
Yes, sir. We're just changing their scope of work.
But we're spending 78,1, whether we do the old one or the new one.
Yep, which style? If we want a full replacement, we're gonna spend the 78,000...
One hundred.
$100, or if we want to go with this new product and get the same warranty.
We're not sacrificing anything.
Still giving us a 15-year warranty, the same thing as we asked them.
I know Mr. Oliver's in the construction. Have y'all seen, you seen any of it applied yet? Y'all do mostly...
I looked it up on the internet today, because I've never heard of them.
Well, we have something like that, it's not called that, but, and we've been really, really happy with it compared to...
They actually built their roof with a place where standing water, they purposely built their roof, and he put the date on it, it's written underneath the water, and it's been there for almost a year with that water standing on it, regular rain, and it hadn't turned up or anything. Most roofs that stand on water cause problems, especially with a liquid that's applied, a polyurethane, or they've made other roofs-type systems over the past years, but I've never been impressed with any of them. They curl up with sun and...
But we're getting the same warranty, right?
Same warranty. Same product, the same brand of company that makes the fabric does the liquid, so.
Mr. Chairman, unless somebody has a problem with it, I make a motion that we do three roofs, the third roof being the next one on your priority list.
I'll second that.
For this same price.
Second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I'm not a, I'm not a big fan of being a guinea pig on new products, but, you know, if they're gonna give us the 15-year warranty and do three roofs for a price of two...
That's why I said same warranty.
Right, right. That's the thing, is I wanted to make sure we're not sacrificing anything, so even if we are a guinea pig, we're gonna get 15 years out of one of the two roofs.
And it sounds like less install, right?
It's a whole lot less noise and invasive to the, to that actual campus and disruption.
Yeah.
You know, they're ready to start on it next week with the liquid, you know? They have to order the materials, they've been put a hold on it until we've got y'all's approval, so.
As long as we got that warranty.
As long as they get a good week of sunny weather, they can do it.
I'm good. Got the warranty, we're good.
And this product drives in 10 minutes when it's put on, so if we were to have our summer or spring shower, it's not going to disrupt anything. They just won't have to clean it back off and go again.
Pick the right day to do it.
Yes.
That's right.
Which is difficult, right?
That's right. That's right. You've heard the motion and the second about making the change on this work order with Curtis Construction on the bid. Is any other discussion? See you none? All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Carry on.
Are we supposed to do something about P.S.?
Yes, P.S. Jones, yeah, that's not on my Capitol, yes. P.S. Jones Athletics is wanting to purchase a 12-by-20 wood structure to store their lawnmower in. They bought a newer mower, and they've got their John Deere machine they drag, and it won't fit through the door of their old building they had. So their athletics have, of course, grown, and they're using it for other storage, so they're not, but they're requesting to put it behind the gym where the red dot is. I talked to the City of Washington, we have to step back from the building eight foot, and they didn't have a problem, and we have no utilities in that area that's... We have a sewer on the far corner, and you really won't be able to see it when you pull in the bus garage, if we put it far enough in the building, it won't be a eye sore. That was one of Ms. Nixon's, she didn't want it to be a eye sore.
And they have the monies for this?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, excuse me.
It's okay.
I have problems.
I've been called.
If you're okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Yes, I've been looking at it.
Let's have a motion, this is...
So moved.
Okay. All right, got a motion and a second, no discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And then I have one more that I did put on there, and it's not, it's actually with trees. I don't know if I can just get a verbal, it's at Bath Elementary, and we have some trees along the property line that are leaning over on a homeowner's wire garden. It's the spruce, I mean, the cypress, Leland cypress, and the very last tree at our pond is leaning over on her property. Is it okay for me to cut that tree?
Can we, can we get a bid on that?
I will take it down out of plan ops, no question.
You'll do it yourself?
You just want to, okay.
Yeah, it's just a six, eight-inch tree, spruce pine.
It's just one. Bath has a lot of trees over there.
Down the property line, right at the pond, behind the baseball field.
Take it, man.
The homeowner's complaint.
You know what he's talking about.
It seems like we're always taking trees down at Bath. They have that many trees on the property, I guess.
There's probably, there's probably 15 in that line that's dead, just brown as can be, and there's a bunch of them that's uprooting, and I talked to...
Did we take a bunch down, not being long good?
Yeah, sure did.
Not since I've been here, we've not taken any.
I thought we did. I thought we talked about it.
I know we did.
Yeah. I've been here five years, May 1st, and we haven't taken any at Bath.
Do you know what he's talking about?
Yeah.
There's quite a few that's uprooting. There's quite a few that's uprooting, I talked to Landscape Unlimited about pulling those back.
That's what we were.
But don't you, if you say you have 15 that are dead, don't we need to address all of them, or you're just gonna address the worst?
These are small, and they're little bitty, they're...
But I mean, you're gonna do all 15.
Yes, ma'am, I just whack them off there, there's no question. The one that's in question is a nice green one, but she's leaning a good 25 or 30 degrees, and actually the power line's holding it up.
Well, it'd be our luck that a squirrel would jump from the tree to the power line, and once again, we wouldn't be covered.
That's right.
I guess it could be.
Just to make it official, I'd like to have a motion to accept this request, all right? Got a motion and a second, you know what it is? No full discussion, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, thanks, Stan.
I forgot about that one, but they texted me.
That's okay.
I'm coming to the meeting, don't forget about our...
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, now I need a motion to go into closed session.
Ms. P.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318, excuse me, 1181, to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 115-C-321.
Second. Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. All right, we are back into open session, and next item on the agenda is to approve the personnel agenda that was just discussed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved.
Now, second, any discussion? See you none, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, item number eight is the calendar, Dr. Fitz.
Yeah, we're back on kind of a regular schedule, we don't have the budget meetings that we've, now we've got that behind us, so, May the 1st is our work session, note 5:30, we made those changes, and then the second meeting would be on the 15th, which really is kind of a week early, but it's because of the week, the way they fall, so the 15th of May would be the monthly board meeting at 5:30. And I also wanted to have you add to the calendar, May the 22nd is the early college graduation at 7:00 p.m. If you don't have that, we're on the calendar far enough in now that we're starting to talk about graduations, so be aware of that.
Have we got the...
May the what?
May the 22nd at 7:00 p.m.
Can we get that list of all the other graduations at any time, or anything? Okay?
Dr. Fitz, did you go with all on the same day again?
Yes, they're all on Saturday, I think, the night.
June 9th.
Yeah, the 9th.
And I'll bring the actual times and schedule for you.
Do you know what time all the halls is?
Seven o'clock.
That's a great graduation.
All right, next item is board member updates. You bake anything?
I just want to, I want to congratulate all the students that have had a great year, that are getting ready to go into, our juniors and seniors getting ready to go into AP exams next week, is that right, Dr. Fitz? To wish them good luck and to do well and represent us.
Okay. Anybody else? See you none, all right? Dr. Fitz?
Well, speaking of testing, again, we want to make an appeal to the public, if you want to come out and be a part in some way, being a proctor for testing, we can always use extra hands that are helping us in the testing time. The other thing I just wanted to mention is a negative thing that I woke up to today that we had to deal with, and that was a threat that was made to one of our high schools via social media. And I want to tell the public that it was quickly acted upon by law enforcement, our